With the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the moment of silence? Thank you. Roll call.
Alexander.
Alexander. Spatelli.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski. Kalwinski. Salinas.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakels.
Here. We have seven present, two absent. Mayor?
Hi, thanks, Councilman Rakos. Good to see you all. Thanks for the invite. Back to the council meeting is my address for October 11th. This is a busy council meeting, I know you all know that. So I'm gonna limit my first part. I have comments for everything we're doing today. I'll just comment at the appropriate time period. I don't need to do that at the beginning of the meeting because I'll be here with you all for the entire meeting. My activity log for the past few weeks since the last time we all met, met with representatives of Hammond Sanitary District to go over their financing and their long-term control plan. It's something that we constantly do. Obviously, we have a big commitment that we've made to the federal government that must be met over the next decade or so, so it's good to keep up with them. Hosted a couple hundred Realtors to the city Hammond at the Hammond Los Marsh Golf Course for the annual Realtors Breakfast. I want to thank Councilman Dan Spatelli for always being the leader and the liaison between us and the Realtors, as well as everybody who worked so hard to put that event on. It was a great day. A lot of people came to Hammond and enjoyed themselves and went home with positive impressions. So it's always good. And the Realtors have a real good relationship with us all, so it's really good to see them all come here. Attended a caucus of Hammond's Democratic Precinct Organization to watch the election of your council president to become Hammond's new city chairman. Congratulations to the city chairman, new city chairman, Councilman Rakos. Good to see you, and congrats.
Thank you.
Had breakfast with a representative from United Engineering to get updates on projects across the city Hammond they supervise. Attended a visitation for Ms. Annie Burns Hicks at Mount Zion Baptist Church. As you all know, Ms. Burns Hicks was the first African-American teacher in the city Hammond. She's an icon in East Hammond. She recently passed away. I know we've already sent respects from the city Hammond. I know Councilman Berry is real close and has done a great job. I just wanted to say thank you to the family and to Ms. Burns Hicks for everything she's done for our city. And as everybody knows, we have an elementary school in the city Hammond named after her, so. Married two Hammond residents, two of them that I've known for most of their lives, Alexandra Stahura, to her husband, Chris McCormick, both of whom have numerous ties to the city Hammond. So it's very nice to use the powers that are granted to mayors, Hoosier mayors under the Indiana Code, to marry two people I know very well. So congratulations to Alexandra and Chris McCormick. Held my monthly captains meeting with the Hammond Police Department. We do this regularly, monthly. Met with captains and chiefs regarding multiple issues across the city Hammond. Met with my appointees to the South Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau. We have two appointees, the Hammond Council has one, and I have one as well. Met with those two appointees to talk about a lot of swirling issues that are going on with the city Hammond right now, especially in regards to possible convention center in Northwest Indiana. So I'm making sure we're on the same page as those appointees are. Met in Chicago with one of Hammond's lobbyists and our attorney. He serves multiple roles, to discuss the upcoming legislative session. Along with Councilman Al Salinas, second district councilman, attended the grand reopening of La Hacienda Azteca. It's a great restaurant located 150th and Columbia. It's a hard-working gentleman named Gus that live in the American dream, and he built a great restaurant. It's excellent, excellent food. If you like Mexican food, La Hacienda Azteca at 150th and Columbia. It's a grand reopening. It's a great owner, and it's a very, really proud day. So thanks for being there with me all. Attended the Hammond Fire Department Fire Prevention Open House at Station 8. That was well-attended. Few hundred people from the city were there, a lot of council people, obviously the chiefs, and everybody did a great job. Met with Cargill, the Cargill Plant Superintendent, as well as Cargill's corporate counsel in City Hall to discuss the $36 million tax-free municipal bonds that they're attempting to issue. That's something that's gonna come before the council probably within the next couple of weeks. This is, as you all know, municipal bonds are tax-free, and the only way for any of our industries to issue tax-free bonds so that investors can buy it and get the tax-free benefits is to be approved by the Hammond Council, as well as the Hammond mayor. So Cargill's attempting to refinance bonds, and we need to approve them for their tax-free status. So you'll be seeing them come before you, and I'm willing to discuss more if you have questions about those. Also, attended Hammond's annual trunk-or-treat. I want to thank the council for having a booth there, as well as the over 1,000 kids that showed up three weeks before Halloween. I thought it might be a little too early this year. Everybody proved me wrong. We had 750 bags going into that event, and we thought we'd have plenty for this trunk-or-treat, and we'd still have some leftover for the next trunk-or-treat that we're doing. We ran out of those bags with about 15 minutes left. So there was over 750 kids there. So it was a great event. Sportsplex looked great. A lot of our city departments were out there, so I want to thank everybody for working real hard, and the kids had a blast. So, City Hall was used over the past weekend for a film shooting. Not sure if you're aware of that, and I wanted to make sure that you knew about that, just in case you heard. I heard it was Chicago Fire, but it wasn't. I don't believe it was. It was a small indie film that was filming there. They wanted to use this Hammond City Court, and they were here over the weekend. So it was the weekend of October 2nd, excuse me, October 12th and 13th. They paid $1,500 to us. We had some people stationed. They didn't really abuse or use or abuse anything. I think we had one fire alarm go off because somebody used too much hairspray. So it was not very exciting over the weekend, but they did a good job, and we will see Hammond's City Hall, City Court, and an indie movie shortly, and I'll let you guys know what the name of it is and everything. I have a lot of items that we're talking about tonight that I'll prepare to discuss when they come up. There's two resolutions with Hammond Police and Hammond Fire that are vital, that we talk about them today. We need to come up with a resolution today. I'm willing to explain those. Obviously, the budget's before you on first and second reading, including sanitary district redevelopment. We're gonna be talking a lot about that. Wheel tax is up for third and final reading. I'm ready to discuss everything as they come up. I just want to say thank you. If you don't have any questions about anything, I'll be ready to discuss those items when they come up.
Anybody have any questions for the mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Next up, approval of minutes.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Salinas.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from the September 23rd meeting and place them on file.
Second.
Thank you. Second by Councilman Warple. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next up, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for approval of claims, beginning with claims dated September 19th, 2024, and ending with claims dated October 9th, 2024. Claim number 8242 through claim number 8924 inclusive in the amount of $13,880,601.96. I so move.
In a motion of second by Councilman Warple, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spatelli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Alexander, could you, yes, okay.
She's here now?
She's here electronically, yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski. Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. Claims passes 807 and chambers one electronically. One absent. Public hearings.
Item A, ordinance number 2419, sponsored by Councilman Warple and Spatelli, and ordinance of the city of Hammond, adopting a municipal vehicle excise tax and a concurrent wheel tax pursuant to Indiana Code.
Would anybody like to address the council about 2419, adopting municipal vehicle excise tax and concurrent wheel tax? Come up to, state your name and your address for us, please?
My name is Dave Matura. My address is 2130 Superior Avenue, Whiting, Indiana, but really Hammond.
You'd like to speak on the wheel tax?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I thought about that, and I thought that's a lot like the city of Chicago with their stickers. And some of my neighbors have just recently moved in from Chicago, and when I told them about that, they looked at me and said, "That's exactly what I was trying to get away from." You can't tell me that this is happening in Hammond. I said, "Yeah, I'm afraid it is." I said, "I think it passed the first and second readings." Well, here we are at the third. Aside, the other day, I'm driving down Calumet Avenue, and I see an older Hispanic couple, and they're picking up cans from the street. And I thought, "Now, why are they doing that?" Well, the cost of groceries has gone up approximately 25% since 2019. So everybody knows that when they go to the grocery store. It's painful. This older couple is even more painful, to the point where they're picking up cans, which is doing the city a service. But they're picking up pennies to make ends meet. And then I thought, and here we are, in addition to the tax on our food, that's prepared food, we're going to get a wheel tax. Just the fact that you own a vehicle, you're gonna be taxed. Doesn't matter that you already pay to purchase the vehicle, a tax on that, a yearly license plate, federal and state taxes on your fuel, now an additional tax. And then my mind said, "Well, there's a story behind this," and this is where it turns into fiction. But I thought, there's a mayor, and he's driving with his chief of staff. And he says, "What's that couple doing?" And the chief of staff says, "Well, mayor, they're picking up cans." He said, "Well, why in the world would they do that?" "Well, mayor, it's a tough world up there. They're barely getting by. That's why they're doing it." "Really?" "Yeah, these people are barely getting by. Hmm. Will my wheel tax affect them?" "No, they can't afford a car." "Oh, so they won't be paying any wheel tax?" "No, they won't be paying a wheel tax." And the mayor thought about it, and he said, "Were they wearing shoes?" He said, "Yes, they were wearing shoes. Can I pass a shoe tax?" "Then they'll pay a tax on the shoes." And he said, "That's a brilliant idea. Not only will you tax them, but you'll tax their souls." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak on the wheel tax? Anybody else on the wheel tax? Anybody else on the wheel tax? Public hearing for the wheel tax 2419 is closed.
The clerk will read item B, C, and D concurrently for discussion. Item B, the city of Hammond budget proposal, ordinance 2420 for the 2025 budget. Item B. Item B, ordinance 2421, the 2025 budget proposal for the Hammond Redevelopment Commission. Item C, ordinance 2422, budget proposal for the Hammond Sanitary District, city of Hammond. Item D, ordinance 2423, I'm sorry. That was the last one. Sanitary District was the last one.
Okay, and we did get 21 redeveloped?
Yes, 2021 and 22.
Okay, would anybody like to speak, public hearing on 2420, 2421, or 2422? George, are you coming up?
The mayor was gonna just.
Oh, that's fine. Go ahead, George. I'm sorry.
George Stoia, Robertsdale. I didn't research or anything like that, but it just seems that, I looked at last meeting's agenda, and these budgets proposals weren't on there. And I'm wondering, is this properly before the council? I could be wrong, because we're getting the introduction, and we're getting the public hearing. All seems all on the same date. And granted, I know that these budgets aren't something put on two or three pages, but, you know, for example, I have a concern about the, and it hasn't come under discussion, but I have a concern about the sanitary district. We've heard the mayor time and again talking about that there's some big costs coming up to comply with EPA rulings and stuff like that. And I'd like to know, you know, what's waiting for us, if it's part of this budget, if it isn't, or is it part of the budget? But can someone enlighten me? I don't know, it just seems like just being just rammed through, and, just want to know, is this properly before the council?
Thank you, George. Anybody else? Anybody else like to speak on 2420, 2421, or 2422? Anybody like to speak on those? Anybody like to speak on those three?
Yes, I would like to speak.
Come on up.
Hi, council. I'm not exactly sure, but I believe that this sanitary district and the federal mandates that the mayor was talking about, I believe it has something to do, you know, with the sanitary district and the mitigation of floodwaters and, you know, the mandate that we were put under that we delayed dealing with for years and years and years. And now it's become a multimillion-dollar problem for us. And it was kicked down the road for a long time. Now, within that mandate, it said that the city was required to conduct mitigation efforts to stop the flooding. Well, they're gonna build a new treatment facility, but in addition to that, they are also supposed to have some sustainability built into the construction that goes on around here. I don't see any of that going on. I see parking lots going in, draining right into the city drains. I see buildings going in, and they just get fully approved, and boom, all the green space is being taken up. I don't see any mitigation. I don't see how we are actually abiding by this mandate. And on top of that, you're going to pave over the Briar East Woods, which is gonna add more water to the system, so we're going in the opposite direction. And I think that's irresponsible. Thank you.
You're discussing on sanitary budget. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on any of the budgets? Anybody? Public hearings are closed. Next up, communications.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Like to make a motion that all communications received are placed on file?
Put a motion to place all communications on file. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Tyler. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Emerson.
The Capitol Improvement Board met on 10/7/24. Item A, funding allocation number 210, the Paser and Sign Inventory with Burst Group Engineering in the amount of $69,000. Item B, funding allocation number 211, barriers on Kennedy Avenue, Milestone Contractor North in the amount of $5,476.65. And that is all we dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Any other committee reports?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Council as a whole will be bringing out 2419.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. Edison Community Watch will meet at Edison School on Wednesday, November 6, 6:30 p.m. Harrison Park will not meet because their scheduled meeting is on Election Day. Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, October 17, 6 p.m., at the Hanson Community Center, which is different from the Gene Shepherd Center that they normally meet at. Irving Community Watch will meet Tuesday, November 12, 9:30 a.m., in the Art Room at Irving School. South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch will meet Thursday, October 17, 7 p.m., at Trinity Lutheran Church on 173rd and Holman. And incidentally, theirs are only semi-annual meetings, so this is their latest one in the year. The Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, November 14, 6:30 p.m., at Calumet College. I'd also like to announce that the Hammond Police Department will have their second annual trunk-or-treat at the police station on Sunday, October 27, 5 to 7 p.m. Come out and meet the officers who protect us, and the same for our community and crime watch meetings. Come out, find out what's going on in your neighborhood, and meet the men and women who protect us and our neighborhoods, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines. Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports is closed. Next up, number nine, ordinance third reading, final passage.
Ordinance 24-19, sponsored by Councilman Warple and Councilman Spatelli, and ordinance of the city of Hammond, adopting a municipal vehicle excise tax and a concurrent wheel tax pursuant to Indiana Code.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I move for final passage and adoption of 2419.
Second.
In a motion of second by Councilman Spatelli, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
This is $25 per passenger car, and I think it's prorated as far as industrial vehicles and different types of trucks and stuff. I heard the gentleman's concern, and unfortunately, we're faced with a decision, and that is, do we pass a wheel tax, which the state says we can, and/or do we let the streets just crumble away? I know I get calls all the time asking about this street or that street being fixed, and unfortunately, our gaming, as compared to some years in the past, has been cut in half, which is how we paid for the streets in the past, the street projects and all that. And as it was pointed out in caucus, in some cases, in order to apply for certain grants, the people that award the grants will ask, "Have you guys used all the tools and available to you in the toolbox?" And this is one of them. And so I support this. Nobody likes raising the tax, but when faced with the choice of getting calls over the condition of the streets, and we all drive them streets, I choose to sponsor this and support it. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Yes, I would like to point out that we are not the first municipality to do this. The city of Gary, Crown Point, Portage, Maryville, Valparaiso, all have instituted the wheel tax. Every time I go to a mayor's night out, and somebody has a complaint about our streets, they always make the comparison between us and Munster. Frosts me every time, because Munster is a much, much smaller community. They have less roads to finish, and their property taxes are higher over there. So with the reduction of our gaming money, this is a tool that we can use to make repairs to our street. I understand what you're saying, sir. Some people can't afford it, but if they have a car, and they put gas in the car, they should be able to afford it. One of the issues that comes up at every crime watch meeting is Illinois plates. I see Captain Strabavi standing in the back. I would like to call him forward to explain what is called reciprocity, and what the police department's efforts are to ticket the, I shouldn't say Illinois cars, I should say out-of-state vehicles.
City of Hammond council members, good evening. My name is Captain Tom Strabavi, a 32-year veteran of Hammond, Indiana Police Department, and I'm a Hessville resident and President Rakos's district. I'm also tasked right now as captain of Community Affairs Division for the department. So the brief history of reciprocity to, sorry, quote the mayor about a year ago, one of his mayor's night out. It was a problem 20 years ago, it'll probably be a problem 20 years after he leaves office. What we're attempting to do is minimalize that problem. We tried to come up with creative ways on how to do that, because we know that it just isn't fair to have Illinois plates flooding our city. A few weeks ago, myself, along with uniform captain Rob Bunner, a few lieutenants from Traffic and Community Affairs, met with Chief Short and Assistant Chief Long, and they gave us the supplemental manpower of an officer that's strictly designed, which we had before in the past, just to do reciprocity investigations. His name's Sergeant Frank Herrera. I can honestly say over the last two weeks that Frank remains in Traffic Division, but he checks in with me periodically. He's probably up to about 250 to 300 citations as a stance right now. The next thing that Chief Short and Assistant Chief Long took it upon themselves to do was to be with one of the judges from 232 Russell Street to find out if there's anything we're missing as far as when we write the citations for the actual moving violations or actual violations, what the court is requiring from us. So I made a phone call today, retired Sergeant Kerry Newman, who was our reciprocity officer, and I asked Kerry, "How many times did you actually go to court to testify?" And he said, "None." Most of the time what happens in reciprocity cases is they head down to the clerk's office, they pay their fine, they go about their business. We're aiming to try and get more compliance from those people who have out-of-state vehicles while living in our city. So how do we go about doing that? One way we find is, after talking to Sergeant Herrera on some of these citations he left, he's been approached by citizens, and their question he's been approached by citizens, and their question is, what's the white sheet of paper for? And after he explains it to them, they tell them, we had no idea about that. We had no clue. So some of the general public, maybe not all, but some of the general public doesn't even know that once they move into our great state, our fine city, that they have to convert their plates. So after a phone conversation between myself, the mayor, and Assistant Chief Short today, one of the ideas we came up with was simply putting a formatted flyer in everybody's water bill, passing it out to everybody that obtains a water bill, advising them that, hey, just so you know, this is the reciprocity laws of the state of Indiana, and if you're not in compliance, you need to come into compliance soon. We explored other areas of enforcement as well, speaking with code enforcement, trying to see if we can hold some landlords accountable. As it stands right now, you know, the landlords would be the ones that should have it in their lease stating, these are the people that are going to be residing here, these are the vehicles that are going to be here, and perhaps we can attack the problem in that manner. Again, that would also come with the assistance of code enforcement, because they regulate landlords. In closing, I'd be open to any questions, comments, ideas, suggestions that you all might have.
Anybody have any questions for Captain Strabavi?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Captain, thank you for that information. Can you do us a favor? I know, I think we all are familiar with it, but maybe for the public who don't fully understand what that process in terms of ticketing a car that has out-of-state plates, can you go through what that process looks like, how long it takes?
Sure. So your neighbor has Illinois plates on their car, or Iowa, or Florida, or whatever have you. The complaint is submitted to our office, and all of these have to start with a complaint. I found that out from Sergeant Herrera and Sergeant Newman today as well. They have to start with a complaint. So once we get the complaint, to go out and investigate it, Sergeant Herrera will be tasked with that. He would go out and write, basically, it's a warning, a reciprocity warning, it's a white sheet of paper, it looks like a ticket, but there's no court costs, fines, or fees. That gives that person 60 days from the time they're issued that ticket to come into compliance per state of Indiana law. Once that time's expired, Sergeant, during that time, rather, excuse me, during that time, Sergeant Herrera then has to launch a full-fledged investigation into each and every vehicle. So let's say that's that one car that's your neighbor. He's going to have to search water bill, he's going to have to go through tax records, any kind of information he can obtain to prove that the owner of that vehicle lives at 1122 State Street or Blank Street. Once he proves that and that vehicle is still there, then he could go ahead and mail or leave on a windshield a UTC Uniform Traffic Citation for the reciprocity violation. Again, it's after 60 days. Once that's done, I believe the citation would then go to the clerk's office either for a payment or if they chose to contest it, and then it would be put down, set down to 232 Russell Street, to the municipal court, or not the municipal, I'm sorry, the Superior Court, I apologize. That's basically it in a nutshell, and there's a lot of vehicles in the city that fill that bill. Community Affairs, for the longest time, we had reported to the mayor, we had started this back in June, were trying to curb the problem and up our numbers as far as the issuance of reciprocity violations, but Community Affairs, obviously, we've got that among abandoned vehicles, community meetings, a plethora of other responsibilities within our division. It was a great relief when Chief Short and Assistant Chief Long granted it to Sergeant Herrera. I hope that answers your question, sir.
Thank you. And just for clarification, those complaints can come, can be a phone call to the police station, they can come directly through See Click Fix or 301 app, and they can come from residents, from, you know, police officers, whoever wants to report a potential violation can report in one of those forms.
Correct, and the predominant amount of ours are fielded through reciprocity. And as a side note to your question, speaking of See Click Fixes, most of them are signed anonymous. So if we had help from the citizens, again, I guess I just want to emphasize it's a we problem. The police department will do everything humanly possible to curb and put a dent in this issue, but there's other, obviously, sections within the city we'll be leaning on, as well as the citizens themselves.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Captain, I know in my neighborhood, I got the college right there by me, where there's dorms and apartments around it, and when I worked in that neighborhood, I noticed that there were all kinds of Illinois plates, and a lot of them were rental cars or lease cars or work cars.
Correct.
I know, you know, let's say if I was in, let's say I had a grandchild that went to Calumet City School, but I had to pick him up from school every day, and I hear people tell me, well, why don't they go around the schools? I don't want to be hassled because I'm picking up my grandkid.
Correct.
And it's not a simple, it's not a simple issue with a simple solution, is what I'm saying.
Correct. To clarify that, councilman, I'm glad you brought that up. Students, whether they're at Purdue Northwest or they're at Cal College, they're considered transient, they don't, they don't fall under the umbrella of reciprocity. Corporate cars out of Illinois or Iowa or Ohio or anywhere else that are registered to a corporation or rental cars do not fall under reciprocity as well. So I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions for the captain? Thank you.
Thanks, Captain.
If there's, Mr. President?
Yes.
If there's anything I could say on behalf of the administration is, we don't get, sometimes when you've been in the government a long time, you get a little discouraged because there's problems that are never-ending problems, and I think reciprocity is definitely one of those problems that we've just got to keep grinding against. And I'm waiting for the day that Captain Strabavi calls me and says, mayor, we got them all, but I don't think it's ever going to happen, I promise you. It's just one of those issues that all we could do is, you know, there's a lot of job security out there for Captain Strabavi's crew, and we all know, Tom, that his crew is responsible for that. He has a detective specifically assigned for this. It's something we take seriously. And to Councilwoman's point, there's even more of an incentive for people not to get registered right now, so reciprocity is why we're talking about that in the middle of the wheel tax issue. I get it, that's why Captain Strabavi's here. So it's something that's important, councilman, Councilwoman, thank you for bringing it up, and thanks to Captain Strabavi for being here and speaking in front of the council. I do want to point out, I was listening to the gentleman argue about the taxes, and I'm very hesitant to pull trigger on taxes. I want to point out that this tool has been in our toolbox since 2018, I believe, and we intensely passed on it in 2018, 2019, 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023, 2024, and we're passing it 2025. Even if you pass it tonight, it's not going to apply until 2026, okay? We waited that long because gaming revenue was doing so well in the City of Hammond and for our formulas, the cheese grater, we call it, there's plenty of money available to do the roadwork, so why tax the citizens? We passed it up all those times because of that very fact, and now it's no secret that Hard Rock Casino has taken a lot of the business that used to go to Horseshoe Casino, which affects our gaming distribution dramatically, and we've seen dramatic effects to it, and as such, the amount of maintenance that we're doing this year on roads is too low, way too low. And maintenance, that's what we're talking about. This fund, we restricted it even further than state law does. State law gives us three ways we could use wheel tax money. We could use it on curbs and sidewalks, we could use it on local matches for bigger projects, and we could use it on roads, and we restricted it to roads only. We'll find money for local matches and curbs and stuff like that other ways. We restricted this to roads only, with your approval. So I could guarantee you, this tax will generate about $1.5 million a year for the City of Hammond, and we will put 100% of that into maintaining our roads, which is usually just the surface coat, and we'll do miles of surface coat this way, all right? So nobody likes to do it, that's why we passed it all those times. We can't keep passing it and still think we're doing our job. I know how little maintenance work we did this year. If we don't pass it now, what are we just gambling that Hard Rock or that Horseshoe does better? This is not a gamble. This is why I support the wheel tax, and I hope you do too. So thank you. I'm available for questions if you have them as well.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mayor, I know one of the other things that we, we've talked about a lot, but we haven't talked about tonight, is the rising cost to do that maintenance on these roads. And I know prior to my time on the council, I hear, you know, about the glory days where you could do a full block for, what, 20, 30K? And now we're talking upwards of close to 100K, 80K or something like that. So I know that those costs have risen, and we've tried to keep up, but, you know, in situations like this, it does hurt to have to put another tax. You know where my heart is, so you know.
Always, you're consistent, councilman.
But, and it's tough, and it's one of those tough decisions that I feel like if we don't, then, you know, the, our city, our old city will just continue to decay, and we won't be able to, you know, maintain those adjustments.
That's where I'm coming from, councilman, I appreciate it. By the way, other communities that have already pulled the trigger on this, I know we mentioned quite a few of them, almost the exact same fees we're opposing in every single case, I'm going to read off, Crown Point years ago, Gary, Portage, Valparaiso, Dyer, Lepore, Maryville, Munster, that's just the region. I didn't pull up communities like Fort Wayne and Jeffersonville and stuff like that, it's all over the state. This is, we're one of the rare ones that hasn't done this, and the reason was because we had gaming money, we didn't have to. So, and by the way, I fought like crazy when Hard Rock was going into Gary, I think we all, we all know that, but I did, because I knew what it was going to do if it was on the highway, and it's doing it, it's not, it didn't take a rocket scientist to figure out what that was going to do to our city, and so it shouldn't be too shocking that Horseshoe's struggling so much right now. We knew it was going to happen when this proposal was, when the governor was getting flown all over the state, we knew it was going to happen. I'll shut up.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So any further discussion on 2419?
Mr. President, as a sponsor, I guess I'll give the final word real quick. Two things I'd like to address, and I don't mean no disrespect by them, but the gentleman brought up, what if the mayor and Mr. Miller are driving around and they want to do a tax on shoes? Don't work like that. I know the public has this idea that we just look for ways to tax people, or we look the other way when we see Illinois plates. I heard it all the time in my previous job on how elected officials just do what they want. And one day, Mr. Miller and the mayor are out driving around, and one of them says, you know what, I think we ought to add $20 tax on Air Jordans. It's ridiculous, just like thinking that there's a simple solution to these Illinois plates. I've seen it with my own eyes, with the students, being the old man picking up my grandkids from school. It's not simple solutions, and I have no problem. I mean, I was elected to do what I thought was right for this city, and drivable streets is the important thing to me. So now I'll shut up.
Thank you, councilman. Anybody else, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vinesz.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. Passes 7, 0, 1 absent and 1 not voting.
President Rakos, that concludes the ordinances for final reading.
Thank you.
I say yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, Tom.
Point of order.
Wasn't counted.
Councilwoman Alexander said she wasn't counted in the vote, but she can't by state law, correct? Because she's on Zoom.
She couldn't be counted, because she's not in chambers.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance 24-20, an ordinance for the City of Hammond 2025 budget, sponsored by Mayor McDermott.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I move for it to pass on first and second reading with a council as a whole committee here, excuse me, on October 28 at 5:00 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Vinesz. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
You know, a lot of hard work went into this budget. Just to give you an idea, every department head was, had met with the Controller's Office. We went over the last five years' worth of expenses in each department, made an average. So the numbers that you see before you are well researched. Every single line item in that budget has been thoroughly discussed, based on facts, with the department heads that actually spend that money. We also, I know I've been keeping you all in the loop about negotiations with our police and fire, as well as our Teamsters, and we know that, it's public that the police department is on record their first year asking for a 15% pay raise, and we're discussing that. The pay package would be 25% over four years if they accept it, and I have every reason to think they'll accept that, which is going to add to the challenges that we have in city government, because we need to do this to stay competitive with our police department, and if we don't do things like that, we will see a massive number of police officers quit our department and go to other departments where they're making more money. So if we want to be in the police business, which I know we do, we have to be competitive, and quite frankly, Hammond Police Department's used to be one of the leaders, and so we have a lot of issues going on. This budget's well thought out. Obviously, we're available for any questions you have, but we do have some good news in this budget as well, things like RSS value, which is the number of new businesses we're bringing into our city, increased 12% in this budget. That's something that's, that's something that's phenomenal, that's encouraging for our city, that we have grown our property tax revenue to $42 million, and that's significant for me, okay? $42 million was the amount of money that we used to make before property tax caps took effect. That's a big number. It's the biggest in the region. RSS value, the highest in the region. It's something that I'm real proud of, and it's something you should all be proud of too. It's a lot of hard work went into that. It was sort of like a one-trick pony when I took over. We had a gaming boat, and we relied on it a lot, and we're very diverse right now. Our revenue is very diverse, and we have taken a hit on gaming, but we're so diverse as a city that we're offsetting that pain with strength in other areas, and that's something that's, if we didn't have that right now, it'd be dark times in Hammond with what's going on in the boats right now. So I'm real encouraged, even though this is a challenging time, even though we're negotiating big contracts, I'm encouraged, because it seems like our property taxes are picking up, RSS value's picking up, and that's a healthy thing for our economy, a real healthy thing. So I'm available to answer any questions, and if I can't answer them, I got Megan behind me, which makes me real confident, so. There you go, there you go.
Does anybody have any questions?
I know we got third and final next week. Give you an idea, guys, the police department itself will be $37 million cost next year. We get $42 million in property tax revenue. These are the types of challenges we have. The police department budget itself almost eats all of our property tax revenue. We have a couple bucks left over. How much does the fire department cost? 25 million. So just adding the police and the fire budget together wipes out every single penny of property tax revenue that every homeowner pays in the City of Hammond, and we're upside down by 15, 20 million dollars. These are the challenges that we have, okay? And we've made it work, and that's a lot of hard work in the Controller's Office. And I tell you, I've become accustomed over the years to having a really top-notch Controller's Office, and we have a really top-notch Controller's Office. We really do. We have a bunch of smart people working in there, and they work real hard. So if you have questions, and if I can't answer them, please see Megan. Over the weekend, I know that they were in here, and, you know, I know they fielded a couple of questions from the council, but this is a well-thought-out budget, and we can make it work, and next year, I think we're going to be in a strong spot to make another good budget, so.
So any other discussion on 2420, Hammond budget proposal? Any other discussion? Any discussion?
Could I say one more thing, councilman?
Sure.
I'm sorry to keep talking, but it is, I did sponsor it, so. Another real bright spot, our water revenue has picked up a lot. We're on long-term contracts with our customer communities, our customer communities, our Indiana communities, we're on long-term, at least eight more years under specific contract, and then after that, their communities pay a rate of what we pay. So we have real good contracts in Indiana, and our Illinois contracts are kicking butt. So, yeah, we've taken a hit, but we're doing well in a lot of other spots as well. So I did want to point out that there's a lot of water revenue that's built into this budget, helping us pay for it. Another thing that's helping us right now is pilot fees from our utilities. That's one thing that we really didn't have when I took over as mayor, is if the Hammond Sanitary District is in the City of Hammond and they have a filtration plant, they don't pay any property taxes. And yet, you know, they're, they take space in the city, and if that was a private business, they would owe us hundreds of thousands of dollars in property taxes every year. So how much does an entity like the Sanitary District pay in property taxes? How much does the Water Department pay? And they have port authority, so we've been doing a good job making they have Port Authority. So we've been doing a good job making sure that property tax revenue is coming into the city like it should so that we can properly fund our government, pay our police and firemen what they deserve, and have a safe community. So thank you. I'll shut up now.
Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski. Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes. Passes first and second reading, 2420, seven, yes, zero, no, two absent.
Item B, ordinance 24-21, the 2025 budget proposal for the Hammond Redevelopment Commission, sponsored by Councilman Spitali and Councilwoman Vines.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading. I refer to council as a whole on October 28 at 5:00 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Spitali. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
All these different budgets that come before you that are submitted by the administration are all similar. They all have similar raises for the employees. It's, we treat everybody. So every budget you will have before you is treated similarly. We're all one unit, even though we have different units, we all are one team and we approach you. So if it's 2% pay raises, it's 2% pay raises for all employees, unless there is some special circumstance. But so every budget that comes before you, be it water, be it sanitary district, be it redevelopment, it'll be consistent in that regard.
Thank you, Mayor. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski. Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes. Passes seven, four, zero against, two absent.
Item C, ordinance 24-22, the 2025 budget proposal for the Senator District of Hammond, the Sewer Maintenance Fund, and the Special Sanitary Debt Service Fund, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and Councilwoman Spitali.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of 2422, refer to council as a whole.
looming in our future. Probably in the next 10 years, the Hammond Sanitary District will be forced, forced to spend $200 million on long-term control plan, maybe more than $200 million. And when that happens, it's being required by the federal government. When that happens, we will be forced to raise rates on Hammond residents when that happens. This is happening. This isn't an evil Mayor McDermott plan. This isn't an evil city Hammond plan. This is the U.S. federal government, a mandate with the Department of Justice. So they're forcing us to do it, and we will do it. We have to. I don't feel like going to federal prison over clean water violations. So when this happens, and it will, it will, when it happens, our rates will go up. But there's nothing in this budget that has that, not a penny. That's, there's, we're talking about it, we're planning on it, not in this budget that's before you, not a penny. Okay? I just wanted to address that. But that is out there. The gentleman was correct. There will be days when we come, the Hammond Sanitary District has to approach the city council and say, here we go, guys. We've been talking about this for years. We need to spend $50 million on this project. That day will come, and just not this year.
Thank you, Mayor.
I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but that's a fact. I mean, it's out there, and it's good for Hammond residents to know that. This is not something we can negotiate our way out of. It's coming.
Thank you. Any, any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski. Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes. Passes seven, four, zero against, two absent.
Item E. Ordinance 24-23, sponsored by Mayor McDermott, and ordinance fixing the salaries and wages of all city officials and employees of the City of Hammond, Indiana, other than those fixed by statute or by ordinance heretofore enacted and fixing the effective date thereof.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Warpo.
I move for passage on first and second reading and defer it to council as a whole at 5:00 p.m. on October 28.
The motion is second by Councilwoman Vines. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Council.
We put all employees in for 2% pay raises under this ordinance, so I just wanted you all to know. If you didn't do the math, which I'm sure you did, but for the people that are watching in the audience that are wondering, that's what we put the employees in for 2% pay raise. That's built into this ordinance. There are employees that receive what we call special pay raises that would be built in there already, but the 99.9% of the employees are getting 2%.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski. Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes. 2423 passes, seven, four, zero against, two absent.
Item E. Ordinance 24-24, sponsored by Mayor McDermott, and ordinance fixing the salaries and wages of all police officers and firefighters of the City of Hammond, Indiana, other than those fixed by statute or by ordinance heretofore enacted and fixing the effective date thereof.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Warpo.
Move for final, I'm sorry, first and second reading with a committee, council as a whole on October 28 at 5 o'clock.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
These are tough to pass right now because we're in the middle of negotiations with police and fire, and obviously, we have deadlines with you all. So we want to submit this to you, but this is something that's going to have to wait to be passed until we know what the number is when we finish our negotiation with police and fire. So Megan has dialed in a 1% pay raise right now, just because that's what we did this year for police and fire. I imagine that's going to change based on the outcome of negotiations. Okay? So when we know what the outcome of negotiations is, and we know that it's been voted on and approved, then we'll ask the council to change these ordinances to reflect that, and then we'll approve it at that point. That's how I hope it goes down. But just so we can get this turned in to you, Megan decided to put a 1% in there. We'll just deal with it down the road, okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
I hope you guys understand. It's tough to turn in a police and fire salary ordinance while we're negotiating police and fire salaries, so.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski. Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes. Passes seven, four, zero against, two absent.
Item F. Ordinance 24-25, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance to appropriate monies into the 2024 Gaming Fund.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of 2425, refer to council as a whole with a committee meeting on October 28 at 5:00 p.m.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Uh, this is simply moving leftover 2023 money into 2024. Uh, so we can utilize that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
It looks like there'll be a public hearing on 10/28 for this as well.
Uh, yes, you are absolutely correct. Thank you, Councilman.
All right, so there's also a council, a public hearing on 10/28? Okay. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski. Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes. Passes seven, four, zero against, two absent.
Item G, ordinance 24-26, sponsored by Councilman Zalinas, and ordinance amending ordinance number 9252 and further extending the college-bound scholarship program.
Mr. President.
Councilman Zalinas.
I move for passage on first and second reading for ordinance 2426.
Second.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilwoman Vines. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mayor.
This is not due in the next year, and I appreciate it, Councilman Zalinas floating this ordinance. The thing about this ordinance that's important for us to remember is this is a signature real estate development tool we use in our city. It's been successful. Thousands of kids have graduated from colleges all across our state under this program. Last, we spent $58 million on college scholarships right now, and I think personally, I feel like that's paid itself off multiple times with our increased housing market. The housing market over the last 10 years in the city Hammond's increased like 70%. So all these things happened because, in my opinion, we have a great business environment in Indiana, and we have a great college program that's encouraging people not just to move here, but to stay here. And that was, when I took over, that was a big thing. People were leaving. And it's stopped the people from leaving. It's encouraged people to stay, to fix up their home. Their kids are getting educated. Yeah, it's costing us around $3 million a year right now, but I think it pays itself off so much. You talk to the realtors, the realtors that are selling homes in our city, and they'll tell you that people are looking to move to Hammond right now, and I think that's great for us. So I appreciate it, Councilman Zalinas bringing it up. I do want to point out that if you have a kid in college right now, right now, college bound is funded for the rest of this year, and college is funded through the end of next year by ordinance, and then it would run out. So I appreciate it, Councilman Zalinas bringing this up right now. It would extend it for another 10 years. And I do want to point out to the council that stuff happens. We went through a pandemic, and we still maintained our loyalty to this program, but stuff happens. And if something happened in Hammond that was so devastating that we couldn't afford to do this program anymore, there is language built into this ordinance that gets us the financial flex, the ability to get out of this commitment. It's unusual to see a city paying for college scholarships for children of homeowners. That's unusual. So obviously, if something happened where we weren't making as much money from water sales in Illinois, or our revenue dropped dramatically too low in the, in the riverboat where we couldn't afford it anymore, then we could get out of this. So I appreciate you, Councilman Zalinas, for bringing this up. I think it's important for the city. I support it, and I hope the council does, too. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski. Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes. Passes seven, zero, two absent.
President Raichos, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Next up, resolutions.
Item A, Resolution 24R-18, sponsored by Councilman Warpo. A resolution of the common councils of the City of Hammond, Indiana, rejecting establishment of a merit system for the Hammond Fire Department in accordance with Code 36-8, 3.5-5.5, and allowing the membership to vote on the issue in accordance with Indiana Code 36-8-3.5-4.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warpo.
I move for passage of 24R-18.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilwoman Vines. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Warpo.
Pursuant to state law that Clerk Golick cited, an eligible police department will establish a merit system for its members effective by January 1st, unless before December 31st, we decide to opt out as a legislative body. By opting out of this, we're leaving it up to the membership of the police department and the fire department to decide if they want to establish a merit system for their bodies. Did you have something to add, Mayor?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I agree, Councilman Warpo. So the state of Indiana in the last legis, first, I've been mayor 21 years. When I came in, the promotion system that we have in the discipline system and the hiring system, hiring goes through the pension board, all right? Discipline goes through the Board of Public Works and Safety. The chief runs the department. It's the way it's always been. The chief has power to promote all the way. There's a lot of seniority that takes place up until you get to sergeant, and then once you get beyond sergeant, it's based on merit, it's based on accomplishments, it's based on seniority, it's based on, you know, relationship with the chief of police, and that's the way it's always worked in police and fire. So I've always heard about merit systems, and quite frankly, we approached the, the police and the firemen multiple times over the last 20 years and asked them, do you want a merit system? And they've said no. They like it the way it is. This is the way it's always been. So last year in the General Assembly session, I start hearing word about a merit system, and it's coming from the Republican supermajority, and it's got legs. This thing's passing the House, it passes the Senate, and you're like, okay, they're passing a law in Indianapolis that says you must be on a merit system if you're a Hoosier, police, or fire department. You must. You will be run by a board of five people, two people appointed by the FOP or the Fire Union, two people appointed by the mayor, one person appointed by the council. This board must be bipartisan. This board will basically run the department. The chief of police and the fire chief will be a sort of like making recommendations to this board, and this board will be the one that hires, the one that fires, the one that demotes, the one that promotes, the one that does everything. So if we have a situation, we had a fire, a fireman get fired sometime back for doing something really, really dumb, it was covered in the newspaper, okay? It was shockingly stupid what this fireman did, and we fired the fireman. On the spot, we were like, sorry, there's no way you can come back from this one. And that fireman had rights still. The fireman went to the Board of Public Works and Safety, and we set up a hearing, and the Board of Public Works and Safety was going to decide, and even if they agreed with the administration, you could still sue in court to try to keep your job. So the firefighters and the police officers have due process when they're going through this process, right? But under this scenario, if this was happening, if that firefighter did the same shockingly dumb thing, the fire chief could say, I'm making a recommendation to this board that you're going to get fired. And then we make a recommendation to the board, and I tell you what, there's two people from the union on that board. Maybe they don't want to see this person get fired. Maybe they're like, I don't know. I don't like him personally as mayor. I don't. We've been doing this for 21 years. Nobody from Indianapolis talked to the fire chief or the police chief and asked us our opinion on this. Nobody cares about our opinion. We're just the ones running the department. They just said, screw you. If you got a police or fire department, if you got a merit board, whether you like it or not, suck it up. So this passes the General Assembly, signed by the governor. It's going to become law, right? Well, we read it, and it says, you know what? You don't have to do this if. You don't have to do this if the council rejects it. And if the council rejects it, basically, the officers and the firefighters get to decide for themselves if they want this system or not. Because some of them don't, guys. I've talked to dozens that don't. They don't want this. Our firemen and our policemen don't want this. And I'm willing to bet that if you reject it, it'll go to the bodies. And if the bodies don't want it, why are we forcing something on them that Indianapolis says you must have? Why are we doing that? Nobody talked to a police officer or firefighter and asked them, do you want this? I think it's dumb. I like it the way it was. I think we have a great fire department and a great police, and a great police department. It has nothing to do with the governor and the supermajority. It has to do with the way we run it up here. I don't appreciate what they're doing. So I hope that you guys will reject it. And then we'll give it to the police officers themselves so that they can decide. And we'll give it to the firefighters themselves so they can decide. And then if they want the merit system, God bless America, okay? But if they don't, why are we forcing this change on them? So I guess what I'm trying to say is if you reject it, you're actually giving a voice to the police officers and the firemen in Hammond. So I hope you reject it. I'll sign it and we'll let them decide what kind of promotion system they want, okay?
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Warple.
To touch on something the mayor said. I remember before you got here and how many police chiefs and fire chiefs we went through. And that's not an indictment on the previous administration, but I like the way it's going.
I do too.
And, uh, my previous job, I'd love to be able to pick the boss I wanted, but it don't work that way. So, uh, I, just to clarify, a rejection means we're letting the bodies decide on both of these resolutions.
Mr. President, could I interject also?
Yes.
I agree, Councilman Warple. If you reject it, that gives the police officers and firefighters a chance to say yes. And if they want it, there's nothing we can do to stop it. If they say yes, Mayor, I want a merit system, there's nothing we can do to stop it. It's a vote of the body themselves. So basically, you're giving them a voice by rejecting the merit system. You're giving them the choice themselves, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? This 24-18 is concerning the Hammond Fire Department. 24-18. Roll call.
Alexander. Spitali. Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski. Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes. Councilman Spitali, did you? Councilman Spitali, did you want to change your vote to yes?
That's correct.
Okay. Raycos votes yes. 24 R 18 passes seven four zero against, two not voting.
Mr. President.
Yes.
So now I'm going to contact the firefighter union and let them know that the council and the mayor have both rejected the merit system and give the body, the firefighter's body, 60 days to decide for themselves what kind of promotion system they want. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item B. Resolution 24 R 19 sponsored by Councilman Warple. A resolution of the common councils of the city of Hammond, Indiana, rejecting establishment of a merit system for the Hammond Police Department in accordance with Indiana Code 36 dash 8, 3.5 dash 5.5 and allowing the membership to vote on the issue in accordance with Indiana Code 36 dash 8 dash 3.5 dash 4.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I move for adoption of, need my glasses. 24 R 19.
Second. The motion is second by Councilman Emerson. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I know a couple of things as mayor. I've been mayor 20 years. I know one thing about police officers. I've heard over the years that police officers are very reluctant to have civilian review panels. Very reluctant. Over the years, if I haven't heard from 30 or 40 police officers that said, we don't want a citizen review panel. We don't want to get basically chastised by people that don't understand being police officers. I've heard it from 30 or 40 officers over the years. I want my police officers in Hammond to know what this is, is it's a panel that the state wants to put together that has five civilians that are going to be your boss. The police chief is not going to be your boss anymore under this. It's going to be those five civilians that are on that panel that are going to be looking at your body cams, that are going to be deciding whether you get demoted or promoted, disciplined. Basically, all the control of the Hammond Police Department goes to this five-appointed citizen board if they vote yes. I don't think they're going to, being honest with you. But I think that you're giving the police officers a voice by rejecting the merit system. And I have a feeling it's going to be resounding they want to stay with the way we've done it for the past 130 years in Hammond. So thank you, council, for taking this up.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski. Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes. Passes seven zero, two. Not voting, two absent.
Thank you, guys.
President Raycos, this concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Next up, new and unfinished business. There any new and unfinished business? Any new and unfinished business? New and unfinished businesses closed? Next up, public expression. Assistant isn't here. Okay, first up, George Stoya.
George Stoya, Robertsdale. Quite a powerful meeting. So as I understand it, one aspect of it, brought up by the mayor a few minutes ago, is that we're staring down the barrel of a $200 million debt to come in compliance with the EPA. And there's no way out. And what, did he say 10 years or 20 years? I think it was 20. Hopefully, it was 20. But even that. We're up to debt. You know, we're, we've already maxed out on our debt now, haven't we? It's a rhetorical question, but I think we have. So I don't know, where we're going to get, how much assessed value? Is he going to have to go beyond $42 million to get enough of a bonding rating, I guess, that we could borrow? I guess by degrees and gradually, $200 million to satisfy the federal government. To me, it's just, it's the equivalent of bring me the witch's broom. And so I don't, I don't understand, you know, how that's going to be done. With respect to getting back to the license, the out-of-state plates. If you recall, I mentioned the last time, last week or last meeting, that similar to the administrative code, I guess tribunals, boards, whatever it is, when code enforcement finds somebody, it has like a tribunal where they're allowed, I understand it anyway. They're allowed to make their case and at the administrative level. And maybe something can be done whereby, like they've done with attaching liens and stuff to people that don't mow their lawn. And the city has to come in and do, do their lawn for them or some absentee landlord. And so they attach a lien to the property and money can be satisfied. Then it can act as, as a deterrence. I don't, I, just because it's hard doesn't mean that it shouldn't be addressed or tackled. Not to say that Officer Strabavi isn't doing it. I'm just saying, you got to fight the good fight on some of this stuff. Otherwise, we're just going to get overrun. Lastly, boy, there's been a lot of controversy about these merit boards, especially the police merit board. And you have all these citizens that are going to sit there and call balls and strikes, I guess. But that is the essence of, I guess, persuasion, isn't it? I mean, the citizens in many urban areas feel that, that they've been cut off, cut out and that somehow the boys in blue have got their own little enclave. And we, us laypeople, we don't know what's really going on. I'm sorry, I don't buy all that. And I think there should be some citizen scrutiny. Now granted, they may not vote for it, but to dismiss it outright as unpopular is, I think, premature.
Thank you, George. Next up, Dave Matura. Okay. Next up, Ken Rosick.
Greetings, council. My point to the mayor before was it wasn't so much about our debt that's coming on down the road. My, my, the $200 million for a treatment facility and counting. We didn't get here by magic, okay? We got here because of irresponsible, unsustainable development. What you guys approved, okay? This is going on right now. You know, I keep referring to the Briar East Woods. That's 35 acres that's going to get paved over. That's going to exacerbate the problem. You're going to make this treatment facility obsolete before it gets built. You don't, you don't see that coming? You know how much water that is that's going to go back into our storm drain system? And we wonder, you know, we're talking about costs now, costs now. Oh, we're right, you know, right at the end of the road. Well, we didn't get here by magic. We got here because of poor planning and development. No sustainability whatsoever. Irresponsible decisions. Sometimes I wonder if the council actually listens to us. A lot of times when public expression is going on, people are on their cell phones and they're having sidebar conversations and things like that. I remember coming up and telling the council about a problem we had on Kennedy Avenue of trees. The newly planted trees. The 100 trees that were planted in, on Kennedy Avenue. Now, I never complained about Kennedy Avenue. A lot of people have. But I thought it was a good thing. But now dozens of trees are dead and dying because of irresponsibility. What does a councilman do? I think they look over their district. Make sure things like this doesn't happen, right? You see trees dying? Call somebody up. Do something. I said it directly to the entire council. Nobody did anything. We've got the third district that's on one side of Kennedy. We have the sixth district that's on the other side of Kennedy. Neither one of you did anything. Now we have dozens of trees dead, tens of thousands of dollars down the drain. And I doubt if they'll ever be replaced. I don't know what else to say. We, we talked to you. We put in 311 orders. They were open and closed. And not until we spoke to the superintendent at a crime watch meeting that the following day, a 700 gallon water truck came out there. Not a single drop of water was put on these trees all summer long. One of the hottest summers ever. All going to waste.
Thank you, Ken. Next up, Elvia Fuentes.
Good evening, councilman. Firstly, I would like to raise a question. Do you and the mayor really care about the city of Hammond and his residents? Or are you committed to destroy us? You know, and we know that the project that you created will destroy entirely the town, the doom and the environment. Bringing pollution, indiscriminate noise, drains, and thousands of animals will migrate. On top of that, you know it and we know it that the Hammond's residents will be ending paying a huge portion